Good evening. I'm Mayor Pro Tem Jay Arrowood. In the absence of our mayor, I'll be taking his seat tonight and trying to run the meeting as efficiently as he does. So I'm calling the meeting to order. I'd like to ask Councilman Mr. Mark Hopper to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and a prayer. Please stand.
(Inaudible) to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Thank you for allowing each one of us to be here tonight, or thank you for my colleagues that I had the opportunity to serve our community with. I pray that you'd be in our proceedings tonight. Would help us to be humble and to be thoughtful of one another and to act with justice and wisdom in decisions we make. Or we pray that you would keep our mayor safe as he's traveling and on the road, bring him back safely to Greer. Or we just ask that you would be in our meeting tonight and help us to honor you. Pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mrs. Duncan, we have anyone that signed up for a public forum to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. Council, next on our agenda is the minutes from our previous meeting. If you've got a chance to review those and everyone is good with them, if there's no changes, except a second, or a motion and a second.
So move.
Second. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alber?
Yes.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
If you're following on the agenda, the next item is proclamation. Proclamation, the name says it all, we are proclaiming something. We're proclaiming an individual or something about an individual, an organization, a time, a day, something. This proclamation that we're going to be reading in just a second is, without us being able to give this proclamation, we probably would not be here. It's a proclamation about our Constitution of the United States. It is probably the most important document that allows us to be who we are. The Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity who came before us to maintain our liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. This week, which is considered Constitution Week, is a time to celebrate and to commemorate its history, importance, and how it still serves today. It must be emphasized and stressed that it is all, it is all the citizens of the United States' responsibility to protect and to defend the Constitution. All people must know that our Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for the way of our life. I'm gonna do something a little different. I'm gonna ask all council to come and stand before the, before our desk before we read this proclamation. Mr. Mayor, would you flank us on the right side?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Duncan, would you flank us on the left side, please?
This is a proclamation for Mayor Danner and Greer City Council recognizing Constitution Week in the city of Greer. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, Mayor Rick Danner and Greer City Council proclaim September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week in the city of Greer.
Did not know that. Ms. Kathy Gerard, would you like to come forward and receive the proclamation and you can say a few orders?
I'd like to ring my members that are here.
Great.
Thank you so much. I'd like to encourage all of you on Saturday, the 17th, at four o'clock to ring your bells, whatever kind of bell you have, in unison, all over this fine country. Churches, synagogues, everybody will be ringing bells to commemorate the anniversary of the signing of the Constitution. It's a very important moment. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Sure. ordinance regarding shipping containers versus storage sheds. Mr. Brown, here? Okay. He's not here, we'll move on. We have a presentation, we have two presentations coming up. We have one from the Greenville Transit Authority, and so, Addie?
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Thank you. So first off, I want to thank Mr. Booker for initiating us being able to meet. I'm assigned to him as my contact with Greer City Council, and we've had, we had a great meeting, and I want to thank Ms. Duncan, too, for making sure we could get on the agenda tonight. And what I'd like to do tonight is just share a little bit about transit in Greenville County and especially some of the plans that we have moving forward that could help connect us to more places. So what I'd love to start with, if we, if this works, hopefully, fingers crossed, we partnered with Greenville Connects, which is an organization that is promoting the benefits of transit throughout Greenville County on a campaign called Transit is Essential. One of the things that we realized during the pandemic is, for essential workers to get to work, Greenlink was their connection. And so we wanted to highlight some of those customers that we have and the importance that this is in keeping the economy of Greenville County going. So I'm gonna start with one story and then I'll close with another because we like to keep everything centered around those that use our service and our customers and the important work that they do. Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Hey, you get a new place to move to again?
Hey.
I have a school in Johnston. I work at Food Lion. I enjoy working at Food Lion. I love my customers. I just want them all to be safe. I want everybody to be safe. I'm just hectic. I depend on the buses. And as an essential worker, I'm just grateful and thankful for Greenlink. It's been a wonderful experience because if it wasn't for the buses, I wouldn't be able to get to work, back home or visit my grandkids. I would just like to thank Greenlink for getting me to and from work safely.
So what I'd like, next, like to talk about is how we plan over the next probably four to five years to expand our service so more people can get to and from jobs or pharmacies or their health appointments, education, and where we are with our transit development plans. So we updated our transit development plan in 2021. We have done the first piece of it, which was extending our weekday span to 11:30. So all of our buses now go to 11:30 PM where before they were ending at 7:30 PM. Our next goal would be to extend, expand our Saturday service to match that, so we can have it going to 11:30 PM. And then the biggest piece that we have heard from customers, and we have heard this for years, is that our service does not happen frequently enough. You have to wait an hour between buses. So if you get to the bus stop late and you miss it, you have to wait a whole nother hour. So our biggest piece of this plan is to improve our weekday frequency to run 30-minute routes. That will require us to double our fleet and double our staff, but we think it is the most important thing that could make the system more useful and also make it more dependable for those that use it to get, especially to and from work. Next up, we'd like to improve all of our Saturday routes to the 30 minutes. And then finally, we'd like to add Sunday service because right now we don't have Sunday service. So you couldn't use the bus to get to church, to visit family, to run any of the errands that you would need to run on the weekends. And then the next thing that we really are looking at is adding additional routes. So what I'm gonna share with you now is our dream and hope for the additional routes that would come. We would add 15 routes. Most of them would focus on going across the county rather than just the hub and spoke system that we have now. And one of the things specifically for Greer that we would love to include in these plans is a Greer connector that would take it from the system and run it through the city of Greer and connect back to the system, which would allow better connectivity and also better access for folks that live in the Greer area. Now, of course, all of this is funding dependent, but we are hoping that we can secure the dedicated funding to do this and expand to more places. The other idea that has come up, because we are not a highly dense area, the way Greenville County has grown and developed, there are pockets of density, but between those pockets of density, it doesn't make sense to run a bus route. So we are looking at adding a demand response service, which would kind of look like what our pair transit service looks like now. You would make a reservation as to the time that you would want to use it, and there would be different zones that would be priced different ways across the county. So if you live far away from a bus stop or in an area that's not as dense, you would still have a public transit opportunity. And this would be done with vans or smaller buses instead of putting the larger buses on the roads doing this. And they will also could connect to some of the routes within the core of the system as well. And we think this is a economical way to connect more people to the service and also a way to kind of nod to the fact that we don't have the density of some of the larger cities that have very successful fixed route services. So in order to do all this, one of the first things that we knew was we needed to upgrade our maintenance facility. Right now, if you've been to the Greenville Drive Stadium, our maintenance facility sits right there on Augusta Street, and it was a former beer distributorship. It was donated when that area of town was not a place where there was a lot of development going on, and they said, here, take this beer distributorship and make it your maintenance facility. So we cannot expand the system until we get a new maintenance facility because we frankly don't have the space to house the buses or service the buses that are needed there. So we received a federal grant and hopefully are gonna be breaking ground in a couple weeks on a new facility that will be kind of the linchpin of, of all of this in making more service be able to happen. We did a lot of public input with this. We had five stakeholder meetings, two public meetings. We've talked to subcontractors and trying to do some outreach there, and we're at the 100% design being completed. And we've also included some amenities for anybody in the county to use on the site. There will be a park, there'll be walking trails. There are plans for the county to connect this area to the Swamp Rabbit Trail as well and extend that trail system. So we're really excited about it. But of course, as everything, it comes down to funding. So I just wanted to, before I finish, kind of talk about where we are with the funding for the project. I know this is not gonna surprise anybody in this room. The inflation over the past couple of years has made this project almost double in cost. We have some funding that we secured through a grant. We have some other funding that we have secured through both the county. And when we sell our new property, we have the assessed value of what that property could go for, and that would be poured back into the project as well. But we have about an $8 million shortfall right now to complete the entire project. We're hoping maybe construction costs will go down, material costs will go down. Again, we probably aren't gonna be doing any of that piece of it beyond the dirt work and the utilities work for another year, so maybe prices will go down a bit. But we're working really hard right now to secure the funding for that $8 million shortfall. And we have some grant requests out there and some other grants that we would be putting in, and you know, we may come to you all and ask for a letter of support that wouldn't include money, but just to say that expanding public transit in Greenville County is important not only to the county but also to all the municipalities as well. So before I close, I want to end again with a customer focus and share with you another one of the videos from the Transit is Essential campaign.
Transit is Essential.
My name is Jennifer Black. I am a 43-year-old mother of four. I work at Christian Health. I do my love. I love them those I can. This is where I wanna be. Working in a hospital during the pandemic has had its ups and downs. Greenlink has created a crisis. Absolutely a nice thing. Public transportation with Greenlink has allowed me to be there for those in need, not just to clean your rain, to be there for patients at the hospital. So I can be there to contribute to the nurses, the doctors. We're all on teams. And public transportation has allowed me to continue that. I don't have a car, and from where I live to the hospital, there's no way I could walk in. And having to get a lift, that's just too costly. I don't know where I'd give it out public transportation.
Thank you again for having me, and I don't know if you, if you had questions, I'm happy to answer them after the meeting, or if, if there were any questions now. I don't know how you all handle your presentations. I know everybody does it differently, so.
Council, any questions?
Yeah, I had gone and attended several meetings back when I came on council. And they had told me at one time, because I kept asking why couldn't transportation come to Greer when it was going to Clemson and every other place, they said it had to do with the fact that Greer was in two counties. That federal funding comes, but with the two counties, Spartanburg and Greenville, it kind of eliminated Greer.
At one time, maybe that was the answer. I will say that there is, the way the counties are split with the transportation authorities, there is a Spartanburg and a Greenville, but I think that's something that we could definitely work out with Spartanburg now. We've got great relationships. And again, even if we just had to come into the Greenville County side, I don't think that would be an obstacle anymore from discussions and plans we've made.
Yeah, my thoughts was Spartanburg could come, you know, through Duncan Lyman to Greer, to the line, and then Greenville come, you know, to the line here.
And I know one of the things that we've talked about in the transit development plan is, especially like Duncan and Lyman, and there's some areas like the Powdersville area as well, where there are a lot of people that are traveling from those counties to come work in Greenville County, and could we do park and rides and things like that? So I think there are some of those geographical boundaries that there aren't turf wars over as much anymore, and it's something that I think everybody would like to see happen.
I'm curious if you've talked about an ideal timeline to be able to expand service out our way specifically?
Well, the maintenance facility should be completed. I'm gonna be really optimistic and say in two years it will be fully operational from the new site. And once that can happen, we would have the vehicles to be able to do it. But the biggest thing we need is sustainable operating funds. Right now, we, the majority of our funding comes from the city of Greenville and the county of Greenville, and we're approved every year or every two years in their budget cycle, so that makes it tough for us to plan. So we're also looking at more sustainable funding options because it will cost about $20 million to implement all that we'd like to implement here, but we're working really hard to make that happen. So again, it's funding dependent, and one of the things is, if the city of Greer were to decide that that Greer connector is something that's really important to you and you had funds to kick in, there are things that can be moved up and down our priority list as well. So that's kind of where we stand now in, in trying to secure that operating funds to make sure all this happens. But until we got the maintenance facility done, we knew we couldn't move forward with anything else.
I know nothing's set in stone. The connector route, the envisioned route, what was, what was the route?
So it, there was nothing put down other than we'd like to run through Greer, and that would be something, if it were to happen, that we would sit down and, and work with you all as the experts and to, to where that would make the most sense. So none of that has been, been put in stone at all, as far as the specific stops.
You mentioned that rapid response. That was something new that I hadn't heard of. Could you, is that something that could be implemented sooner, or, I know that can be a lower cost type item, I mean, what is the anticipation on that?
So I think one of the things that we looked at with that, we did the original transit development plan in 2018, and then we had it redone in 2021, and that was something that came up as, we're not gonna be able to solve our density issues here. We're not gonna be a hugely dense area outside of kind of the core urban areas. So that was something that we really would, would like to look into. And again, I think if it's something that there's demand and interest in, we would move it up the list. But our biggest priority is to get the 30-minute routes. That's the one thing that we would say would be number one, is getting those routes to 30 minutes. Because right now, it's, unless you have to use the system, it's not very efficient to use it as your main form of transportation, and we really want to, to make it more efficient for people. But demand response was something that we thought was flexible and a, and a different way of, of using our, our assets and resources, too.
How much funding percentage-wise do you receive from Greenville County that is used for operations, not, not new construction, upgrades, recurring expenses?
So it, it depends, it depends on the year, if you take out the capital side of it, but about 60% of our operating funds come from Greenville County and 40% come from the city, and that runs all of our routes from an operating standpoint, take the capital out of it. So the capital is, fluctuates from year to year. Like this year, there's not a huge capital influx, but two years ago, we had about $3 million of capital because we replaced buses. So the capital comes and goes, and there's no, outside of Greenville County giving the land for the maintenance facility and Greenville City giving a $1.4 billion matching funds, all of the money that's being used on the capital side for the maintenance facilities coming from federal funds. Now, we may have some state funds or some other funds that come in to fill that $8 million gap, but that's where our capital side stands right now. So capital's not as predictable as the operating side.
What cities does Greenlink serve now in Greenville County?
We serve Malden, Simpsonville are the two cities because they have their, their own designated area that the federal funds are used for that. They're not paying into the system right now, but there's a different UZA that contributes federal funds for Malden and Simpsonville. One of our other hopes is that there could be a major change with, you know, all the stuff with the census is delayed, but our service area could change. Right now, we split our federal funds with the Pickens area, and there have been rumors that maybe Greenville would become its own area, or maybe Greenville and Spartanburg would become a mega area, but that's nothing that we have control over, but that could change some of those funding formulas and give us more flexibility to go more places, too, just depending on how that shakes out.
So how do you choose, I guess you do, the buses do go to the Taylors area, correct?
Yes.
All right, so I am assuming that the, the funding from the county comes from all taxpayers in Greenville County. So why has there never been an effort to bring transportation to at least the Greenville County side of Greer?
Part of that is because of the low frequency that we have and the hour routes. So we really go as far as you could get within getting a bus back and forth with an hour because we don't have the capital to put two buses on a route right now. So when we did, about five years ago, we reduced some of our service area because of traffic, so we were not able to complete routes, so we had to shorten some routes. So really, it deals with not having the, the capital to put as many buses on the road that we need to, to extend our service area.
Yeah, I think the part that you said about the federal funding for Simpsonville and Malden, I think that's where it came into the fact that Greer is in two counties, and that was why we were overlooked on the federal funding. Didn't make a lot of sense, but that's the reason.
There's a lot on those federal lines that don't make a lot of sense.
Definitely.
I have one final question.
Yeah, I hope I can answer it.
We, we do a lot of the city, we do a lot of looking out into the future. And I'm gonna ask the administrator to help me on this, but what, what are we predicting our population to be within the next five years? Well, the next five years, I, I think we can confidently say that we're gonna be close to that 50,000 mark, probably closer to that 48, but closer to the 50. So Greer is, boy, within the next decade, be, population-wise, it's probably the largest city, even when in comparison to Greenville or Spartanburg? And there, has there been any look saying, hey, you know, Greer develops densely, and they're gonna have the population? I'm somewhat gun-shy, and it's just for several reasons. It's not just Greenlink, it's, it's other issues that's taken place. And most of the development of whether it's recreation on a county level or transportation takes place around the city of Greenville. And I got that, they're putting in 40% of the funds. That's fine. But our constituents are putting in a big chunk of it and have, over the years, and never gotten any return on it. And what kind of push is there to get service here?
I mean, there's a huge push for all of this, especially from all of us that are on the board service, but the folks that need to be pushed are those on county council, just to be frank with that, is we, we have to have more funding to be able to do more of that. And right now, they're the ones that control that funding unless there's a municipality where if, you know, Malden were to come to the table and wanted a circulator, if Greer were to come to the table and say, we would like service and we would like a circulator, we can cost out what that is, and you could become a, you know, municipal partner and pay for that. We have a couple routes right now that are privately funded. Our route that goes to Icar, Clemson has funded that for their students to be able to move freely to the, their nursing classes and the engineering classes at Icar, and then at all the apartment complexes around that area where they live, too.
Council, any other questions?
I just want to thank you for coming today, because these are the conversations we need to be having now in anticipation of growth. So definitely appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is gonna be from the Greenville Homeless Alliance. Susan McClarty, I believe, gonna be presenting?
Yes, thank you. Here we go. Okay. Thank you so much for having me tonight, and thank you to Tammy for your help. I am Susan McClarty with the Greenville Homeless Alliance, and right after I took this job, I met with Mayor Danner, so I hope he does have safe travels, but it's great to be with all of you tonight. And part of the role of forming the Homeless Alliance came about after something that some of you may remember called the Tent City Crisis. And so that was the focus at the time of a response that was both coordinated by the city of Greenville with Greenville County, so that frontline service providers could come alongside with philanthropy and also concerned citizens to create this unified and coordinated system that focused on the unique needs of those individuals that were under the Pete Hollis Bridge at that time. So I'm gonna jump and just say, we've just been talking about some of the unique position of Greer, and we know that you have some really strong service providers here that have been working with us since we formed this in 2018. And we've just heard you're expecting a ton of growth. It's unprecedented growth, really, you know, just looking at what's been happening since Mayor Danner's tenure, tenure. So it's my hope tonight, just to give you a little glimpse into homelessness. It was great to follow Addie because we support transit as one of our top five priorities. Also housing, healthcare, schools, and jobs, all things that make, as you know, a healthy community. So let's begin at looking at how we arrived at this number in front of you, which says, we can use data to show that at least 2,000, 3,200 unique individuals in Greenville County experienced homelessness in this year that we can at this number in front of you, which says, we can use data to show that at least 2,000, 3,200 unique individuals in Greenville County experienced homelessness in this year that we can back up with data, which we're looking at 2019, 2020. And then how do we know that? So part of that, I just want to help you understand, we're trying to look at the 50,000-foot level and, and look at the data that's available. So we have emergency shelters. You all have some of that here. But the picture here is from downtown Greenville with the Rescue Mission. But we have 1,919 unique individuals that came through our emergency shelters in Greenville County in a 12-month period. Next to that, you'll see our school-aged children. We have 86 different Greenville County schools that reported one or more child experiencing homelessness. And so that number for that school year totaled 1,148, just children, not their non-school-aged siblings or their parents. And then that last number is so low, but that's actually our only time as a community, we count what's called unsheltered individuals experiencing homelessness. And that's mandated by HUD. You'll sometimes see it appear in most newspapers because it happens across our whole country, usually at the end of January. So they call that the point-in-time count, but it's a one-night count. That's what, that's the best we have for backing up with data who's living unsheltered. Here I have a picture of Brandon Cook, who joined me tonight and is actually a resident of the city of Greer. And this is inside the Greenville Rescue Mission, which, if you didn't know, is our largest shelter in the entire state of South Carolina. And I just wanted to point out, in case you aren't aware, that, you know, that's the traditional style of most of our shelter beds, if you haven't been inside of one of our shelters. But also, inside this shelter, Brandon brings healthcare. He does that with many of our services and service providers here in Greenville by working for New Horizon Family Health Services. He runs a program called Healthcare for the Homeless. And we are the only place in South Carolina that has what's called medical respite beds. So there's a story in our report that I hope you'll read on page 25. It's about John, and he's one of the men who came through that. And that's a wonderful example of like a public-private partnership between Miracle Hill and New Horizon Family Health Services. So just real quick, Greenville has 450 emergency shelter beds. Most are geared towards men. So you'll see about almost 70% of the beds serve men. 41 is the average age. We do like to point out that really, most of these people seeking emergency shelter are in their prime working years, between age 25 to age 54. But the kind of the hardest piece of this puzzle is finding these housing options where once you get stable and connected to income, healthcare, transportation, is finding that permanent housing. So just to put it in like real dollar terms, we are looking to increase options for rental or homeownership in the range of $200 to $650 a month, depending on your family household size. So we do see many people who are working full-time in our shelters and who are not able to exit because those housing options are really hard to find. In case you didn't know, but I looked at your comprehensive plan. I think you all have a good plan that identifies diverse housing options. But on this slide, just, we like to make sure everyone in the public, as well as council recognizes, if you're working full-time and minimum wage in the state, you need a rent of about $375 a month. And then everything that's on this slide would help you think about, if my income, you know, is $25,000, an affordable rent or mortgage would be 625, up to $100,000 household gross income, you'd be looking at a rent or mortgage of $2,500. So that's just sometimes to help you put it in perspective because all those are considered this broad swath of affordable housing. So we see that a lot in the news. We're focused in at really that darkest greenhouse and below as the Homeless Alliance. Why should you care? Well, Greenville, Greenville County leads the state in 32,000 households who are not living in affordable housing. So that means they're paying more than 30% of their gross monthly income towards their housing, which creates instability. We also lead the country in evictions. And so if you think about, you know, it's much more likely to exit shelter or move off the street and move into rental. Eviction can be a real barrier for people and often leads to what we call this downward spiral. So just wanted you to think about HUD says if you were to find, and this would be hard, we believe, to find in Greenville County, a one-bedroom apartment renting for $871 a month, but that's what HUD deems as fair rent. It's actually more than the income reported of people who live unsheltered. And then it's 85% of people who are receiving income and in our emergency shelters and reporting their income. So that's where it takes all of us working together. You know, we have to have this unified approach if we think we're going to create this pipeline of getting people out of that experience of homelessness. I wanted to point out, as we've heard, you are an economic engine, and you're attracting a lot of growth. And so you're contributing to this rising family median income. And so in your report, it only goes through 2021. But just to make you aware, the 2022 number recently came out and went up again to 85,200. That's for a household of four. But you can look in our report and see how that breaks out according to HUD if you're a household of three, or two, or one, or, you know, five. But when you see that number, just always remember that's a household size of four. This is continued, this is expected to continue to rise. So we hope that puts a sense of urgency as well, thinking about the future and your housing options. Just want to end with this slide that just is on your summary sheet of the reports that I gave you tonight, in case it's a little small on the screen. But we want you to think about how do you, as a council, work together to maintain these options of affordability? And just to point out again, the Homeless Alliance, we're really focused in on that very first lightest green quadrant, which would be for households earning, again, a household size of four, around 26,500 and below. And there's many jobs. If you dive into our report, I'm going to just really quick hit on a few key pages, but we hope you'll take a moment and read the full report that we explain, what does that mean within that light green quadrant when we talk about a housing ladder and the options needed? So we hope you take a moment to look at that. And we have wonderful partners who would love to be building more housing in Greenville. So, you know, if you have ideas of land that you would want to consider, or any other ways you can be creative to help bring down that cost, it's really a challenge to get it into that lightest green quadrant. We do want to point out, of course, you have the Greer Housing Authority as a wonderful partner to come alongside you and help create some of those opportunities. And then if you'll take a moment, if you've never heard, and this was one thing that Mayor Danner and I talked about, there's some really effective evidence-based models that we have in Greenville that we like to point out and make sure you know. If you can bring these partners to the table and provide the right type of housing with support services, you can also save your community dollars in terms of people using your detention center or people using the emergency room. Because when the right housing is there, their lives improve dramatically, and it affects the overall community health as well, decreasing the cost to you and us as taxpayers by as much as 92% based on our study. And next to that, we have a story, again, as I mentioned, about medical respite. And then I'm just going to close with making sure our definition of homelessness, just so you know, aligns more broadly than HUD's. And so we align with the school districts, which comes from the US Department of Education. And so what that ends up translating into is if you use HUD, about 10% of our children experiencing homelessness are actually eligible for any of the resources coming into Greenville that could end that experience for them and their family. So that leaves 90% that just don't fit into their definition, but according to the school district, are experiencing homelessness. So we explained that in the report, but just to make sure you think about that because as Addie mentioned in her, in the videos showed, you know, solutions are there when we have the transit options. We need the housing option, and we need to be able to move people and not wait for them to land literally on our streets or find limited emergency shelter beds. So at the very end of your report, we do list out the 86 different schools. And just wanted to share that if we were to say, from where we are tonight, what we're zoned for, the elementary, the middle, and the high school are all reporting students experiencing homelessness. So for the most recent year, that totaled 42. So if I had to say to you, pick four of those 42 children that you wanted to offer resources to, that's the situation we face today. And you have those others who are not eligible just because of the definition for opportunity for stability, opportunity to go on and graduate. So we hope, you know, that what we've brought to you tonight is just educational. And if we can be of help to you in any other ways of providing education or connecting you with additional partners outside of your really strong partners who are engaged, many of them already in our work, we're here to be of help. So thank you so much for your time. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to, to answer those.
Questions? I have a couple of questions. You focused a lot on affordable housing. But I think, I guess my quote, as I think about things, I go back and say, okay, is homeless, homelessness a greater issue now than it was 70 years ago? I mean, what kind of percentage of the population is, is homeless versus, you know, yesterday? Do you have those numbers?
I would say in your report, you can see how the student homelessness has been on an upward trend. The data we have goes back as far as 2011. And that's as far back as the school district has released it to us. But for example, when we formed the Homeless Alliance, Salvation Army was celebrating 100 years of their existence in Greenville County. So it has been something with us. The reason we focus on affordable housing is that final permanent housing option has become more and more elusive to people who, you know, may be working full-time and just aren't able to afford the rent or the mortgage rising cost in Greenville.
We have folks coming in from Greer Relief and give us reports. And they tell us, and the question is asked, all right, you've got a group of folks coming in, and the people, especially the folks they, that are homeless, what's the percentage of, okay, this is going to really be a short time, that they, something has happened, some kind of dramatic event, and has caused them to be where they are? And then you've got others that maybe it's abuse of drugs. And then the other is mental health. You're really covering affordable housing, but how does that serve people with drug addictions and homeless, I mean, and, um...
Mental health.
Mental health.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's a great question, great question.
Are you a partner with the, the hospital systems to say, hey, we need to be addressing this? Because there's, there's some people, and you know this, and this may sound mean, but they don't need to be out there. They're, they're a danger to themselves and others. And they don't want to be anywhere but homeless.
Well, we have such a shortage of housing. I will say, one reason we present it in those three big buckets is when you think about that unsheltered, which is our smallest number, somewhat because it's a one-night count, but it is our smallest percentage of the overall, is that that's a great example when you read about the permanent supportive housing. It's a model where we don't require you to be sober or to be clean, but we move you into housing and bring the mental health and the, the physical health to you at that, at your housing, where your housing is. So it's wrapped, it's called wraparound support services. And that's why we include that study we did with Department of Revenue and Physical Affairs to show what changes overnight is people's ability to accept and work towards improving their mental health and their physical health once they're stable. Sometimes, and we talk about that, too, in the report, just living in that congregate environment, like we showed the picture of with Brandon, is not a conducive environment if you're experiencing, you know, mental health challenges. And so again, that's why we can't, we have to have different solutions. But for example, like Miracle Hill has a wonderful recovery program. We could use more, you know, beds and recovery programs. But we've come together around a mission to say, for people who are seeking stability and who are experiencing homelessness, we want to increase options there because then hopefully we're creating this pipeline. So as people make that choice and they're ready for the change, you know, they can be received. But I like to say, we just need a lot of Drano right now in our system. It's very clogged. It's very, like, people are just having to stay in emergency shelters longer.
And I, I don't know that you're going to have an answer. You probably have a yes, but the upstate economy is like no other. I mean, even during the downturn in '08, '09, we still were a lot better off than most parts of the country. We have jobs in our field and not, and they are entry-level jobs or on up. But it appears just by driving around and looking, the number of homeless is greater than ever. And there's a, I don't think a lot of people understand, or at least I don't, if, if there's opportunities there, and then, and those opportunities aren't being used, then some people are starting to question, one, well, why, if, if we have a group of people who are not taking the advantage of a job that's paying $15 an hour, and that's working in a grocery store, why do we need to be providing food and clothing and shelter to this entire group? Because it appears, and this is what people, it's just by observations, is that it seems like when you have a center where you're giving out things for folks to survive, I got it, it just brings more in. And then to turn around and say, housing prices are causing this to happen, economically, that doesn't, that, that, it, it doesn't compute with me. But if you don't have economic prosperity, then everybody goes down. And so I, it, it's, that's why I question about the affordable housing. I, I, but my, I think if, if there's, the, the two groups, that's the numbers I'd love to know about, is the people who are homeless because of mental illness or because of addiction.
I could get back to you with that on the unsheltered group, especially.
That, that would be great because I, I think the, the other portion, I think there, they may be, is, would you say, transitory through the homeless classification? They, 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 they become homeless for whatever event, but somebody, someone, some organization gives them something to get their feet back under them, and then they're on, they're on the way. But the other groups, which I, I, I'm just not sure how you deal with it. And it's, it's more than the city, more than your organization because I know, especially with mental health issues, we do a very poor job in the state in treating our mental, mentally ill. And we don't take people off the streets when they need to be off the streets, period. That's, I, I think that in, in its own right is an abuse of those persons. So, but if you can get that information from me, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I think you raised some very good points. And, you know, we, we want to, I guess, highlight that we are a convener to try to bring together both public and private partners. And so we believe that when you all lean into it and offer what you can through your role, and we bring together, you know, the other partners, hopefully we will see more options. But you're right, that there's very limited mental health services, and that's something that's legislated through the state's budget. So we try to work with all the levels, but we believe the greatest power sits right here at the local level. So that's why we're really excited. And thank you for your questions and your time. I will follow up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Arrowhead, thank you, counsel. One thing I, I do want to point, point you to, and I'm going to touch on this evening, but will be forthcoming in your report that you get from the Engineering Department in a couple of weeks, is our pavement preservation projects. As you know, we have funneled some of our, our road dollars to not just pavement, rebuilding roads or, or resurfacing roads, but actually going to a more modern preservation project. So I want to just point out two of those in particular to just kind of show you what the, those dollars and cents look like. those dollars and cents look like for the taxpayer. But the Hammond Crossing Project has utilized a surface sealant to repave 1.15 miles, which we anticipate to result in a life extension of five to 10 years at a cost of $2.74 per square yard. So this, what this does is it provides us a significant cost savings over a traditional milling and asphalt overlay of $24 per square yard. So we've been able to do this particular project at $61,630. So as you can see, it's roughly 1% of what it would cost to get that, or excuse me, 10% of what it would cost to get that done with this. And so, as we go through this process over the next few years, and we're logging this, I think it's an important story to tell, that the traditional milling and overlaying, while effective and appropriate at times, we've got other options, and we're utilizing those other options through the sealing and pavement, this process. So we're also using the Reclamite. I think it's been, Mike, has it been a year since Steve brought this to council? But it's been about a year, we talked about the Reclamite asphalt rejuvenation process, and that we expect, again, a four to seven-year life extension on that. We've seen, we've done this on about 8.1 miles of city streets throughout the city for a total project cost of $110,000, which is an average of $1.02 per square yard. So again, as our residents see some strange trucks coming through and spraying some strange material on their streets, know that, one, we're extending the life of those streets, and secondly, we are saving a significant amount of money through the application of these processes. But again, for y'all, when you get this report in the next few weeks, pay attention to it, and if you have any questions, staff will certainly be available to explain that process to y'all in a little more detail. Just a couple of other things that we've got going on in town. The Greer Police Department will host Coffee with a Cop Thursday the 15th, so two days from today, at Bojangles on South Buncombe. This will happen from 7:30 to 8:30 a.m., and we'll be there to meet with members of our community, just for, just chit-chat and get to know the cops. We will also be, on September 20th, the police department will be participating, as we do annually, in the National Initiative of Operation Clear Track. This is to distribute safety information at local rail crossings to keep folks safe, especially in a city like Greer where we've got two busy rail crossings in two different areas in our downtown. Another reminder that the upper parking lot at Century Park will remain closed for paving and maintenance, so visitors need to use the lower parking lot and the overflow lot until further notice. Mark your calendars, marks for September 17th, we are hosting two events. Get Your Art On Arts Fair at the Center for the Arts and Toons in the Park at Greer City Park. Rail Fest is just around the corner, and this is a free event. It happens on September 24th, where we feature our local railroad museums, model train associations, et cetera. It's always a good time. And just one more reminder, Thursday, the 22nd, from 7:30 noon will be the city's benefits fair. Your packets should be in front of you. Again, Thursday, 9/22, from 7:30 to noon will be our annual business, benefits fair. Mr. Arrowood, counsel, that concludes my report.
Thanks, sir. Counsel, we'll move on to all business. We have the first item in all business, the second final reading of ordinance number 50-2022, and I see Brandon there at the podium, so.
Yes, sir, there's, no, sir, there's no additional information.
Your motion. Any questions? Comments?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes. Second item in all business, the second final reading of ordinance 51-2022. Any new information?
No, sir. No, sir.
Counsel, do I hear a motion?
No motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions? Comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes. Move on to new business. Looks like we have about three items that the fire department's going to address. The first item is purchase approval of extrication equipment. Deputy Chief Josh Holzheimer is going to explain to us what they are needing approval for.
Mayor Proton and members of council, thank you for having me here tonight. Yes, the first item is the addition, you know, as we are adding two new engine companies this year, we are needing additional extrication equipment, and that, as you read through it, we're asking for the Spartan Fire Emergency Apparatus, whom is a sole source vendor for Humatro. Rescue tools be awarded the funds or to purchase this equipment from $88,057.98. They are a sole source vendor, and you will recall, about two years ago, we purchased some of the same equipment to replace our existing Hearst equipment.
Counsel, you have heard the deputy chief. Do I hear a motion? And a second? Questions for deputy chief? Was this a budgeted item?
No, sir, it was not. And it's, the funds will come out of general fund balance. It was not budgeted because at the time...
The contracts that we had in place at the time were in place at the time of the budget, so this was not a foreseen expense. However, as you well know, we have changed our contractual arrangement with Lake Cunningham, and we've had to make some adjustments accordingly.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
Mr. Holzheimer, the vendor that we're, that you're recommending, you know, we work with here, obviously, re-specialized equipment, is there a way to, did we get any other input, any other vendors?
We, because we've used them before, that we wanted everything to be the same, we used the same vendor again, and they've given us the best prices that, right now, we're buying, the price that we're buying for is pretty, we're locked in before July, and they just went up again, and so that's one reason we're trying to get it ahead of time.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes. Second item in new business is purchase approval, AFG grant, Plymouth Vent, is that how you say that?
Plymouth Vent.
Vehicle exhaust system. Deputy Chief is here again to give us information on this purchase.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Last year in December, we wrote a FEMA grant, or AFG grant, for assistance to firefighter to help with a Plymouth, purchase an Plymouth Vent, which is a vehicle exhaust removal system. As you know, diesel exhaust has carcinogens, and putting that into the station will exhaust the fumes from the vehicles out of the station, and so we put in for that grant, and we are happy to announce that we were awarded a $124,000 grant from FEMA, but we, it requires a 10% match, and that match is $11,272.73. We also recommend that the vendor Plymouth Vent Exhaust System or Air Cleaning Specialist be awarded the project there, the sole source vendor for Plymouth Vent, and that would, those monies would come out of general fund balance.
Counsel, you've heard the purchase approval request. Do I hear a motion? Any questions? Comments? Okay, I do.
Okay.
What station is this going to?
We'll cover all of our stations. Correct, wait, let me, let me explain it. It was written in December for station, our downtown station, and for the Hood Road Station.
Okay. What about installation at Hood Road, since there's plans to replace that station and utilize that is something different?
Yes, sir, I'm glad you asked that question. So, once you, we cannot accept the grant until we had council's approval, so now that you, you know, if we vote to accept the grant, we have already got the amendment written up to what we're going to do is to move that Plymouth Vent system that's going for Hood Road Station to the future station of 56.
Okay. And I am assuming that because it's coming out of the reserve fund or the fund balance, that that was, $11,000 wasn't a budgeted item?
It was not budgeted.
We were unaware that the grant was going to be awarded. We didn't get it until about two weeks ago, so it was a hoped-for, but not budgeted-for dollar amount.
Counsel, any other questions, comments?
Congratulations on the grant.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes. Purchase approval, medical equipment, Life Pack 15 Monitor/Defibrillator. This is a, another purchase approval request from the fire department. Mr. Holzheimer, or Deputy Chief Holzheimer, would you give us some information, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. The fire department has worked very hard over the past years to increase our medical capabilities, and as you know, last year, we became an ALS department, and we purchased cardiac monitors. Well, we're asking for, we budgeted for this item for $42,000, but we came in for that the budget be awarded to Stryker Medical for $41,597.54 to purchase one additional cardiac monitor for our fleet.
Counsel, you've heard deputy chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Question?
How many, how many monitor defibrillators do we have now?
We currently have four, and this would be our fifth one. As you know, we opened the QRV, and that took one of our spare units out of, so now if we have one go down, we don't have any, and this is also going to be put on the, one of the engines. We have, we've just hired two additional paramedics, and we have four in school starting now, so we're almost to have a paramedic on every apparatus that we have.
What does QRV stand for?
Quick Response Vehicle.
And then what does it mean to be an advanced life support agency?
We have, we operate under the same standing orders or operating guidelines that Greenville County EMS does. We carry the same medications that the EMS does, and we get there in about four and a half minutes.
And this was a budgeted item?
Yes, sir, it was.
Okay.
One out of three ain't bad, sir.
Anything else?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes. Item number four is first reading of ordinance 52-2022, which is an ordinance for annexation. Brandon, enlighten us, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, as you stated, this is an annexation of two parcels with access to Kiss Road and Gin House Road. What the proposed use is with the DRD zoning is for a future subdivision. It will be up to 67 single-family detached homes and up to 158 townhomes. Here is an aerial view of the property. The kind of area that shaded to the southeast there, that is where the Abner Creek Middle School is being built currently. Here is the current zoning. The school's property is on R15. Here is the future land use map. This property lies next to traditional neighborhood. Kind of here is a street view off of Kiss Road of kind of the current layout of the street. That road will be improved. Spartanburg County is working on kind of plans of getting Kiss Road widened. Here is a layout of the subdivision that will have one access point on Gin House Road, one access point on Kiss Road. In ordinance 53, not to try to muddy the waters, there is a portion, the line has not completely been guaranteed at this point where it's going to lie, but there is a portion that's kind of going to follow this area that will be dedicated to the city of Greer. Typically with our DRDs, we require two building materials on all of them with shake siding, board and batten, cement board. This is kind of our traditional stuff. The single-family homes will have, detached will have two-car garage, the townhomes will have a single-car garage. This will go to planning commission on September 19th for the public hearing for the zoning of the property. It's all the information that I have for ordinance 52, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is the owner representative of the owner of the property here? We may have some questions. And one other thing, one other item that I hear come back from the planning commission, that when you, your parcel of land comes up for planning commission, you really need to be there, and I'm sure that you will, but the planning commission, they normally just table it and move on to the next meeting, so. All right, folks, you've heard, you've heard the overview of this annexation ordinance. Do I hear a motion? Second?
Second.
Questions?
So I wrote out, just take a look this morning, we've had a lot of discussions in South 85. This is about eight to 10 minutes from the areas we've been talking about. I think this is, in my opinion, as District 3 representative, where this is going to be, this is the type of development that I think will be welcomed and appropriate over time. You said Kiss, that is Spartanburg County Road?
Yes, sir.
I'm glad to hear, it's already on their radar. It was, it's pretty narrow. How about Gin House?
Gin House will also be widened due to the school. I believe if you've written out there, you might have seen all the survey markers, so they have started acquiring the right of way.
Is there going to be a traffic study required, any sort of work done that way?
There will be a traffic study required. I believe the developer's already completed that, but I can also defer to him if you would like.
Yes, we've completed the traffic study.
Are you willing to mention what the traffic study said?
Sure.
Can you come to, please come to the podium?
Sure.
Walton Jones, we're cutting engineering. Traffic study pretty much incorporated the school as well. They, we had Eric Dillon, used to work with ICE Engineering, did that. So pretty much the traffic, the, there's no approvals required based on our proposed development, but there is going to be a traffic signal at the intersection of Abner Creek and Gin House, and that's what the school District 5 is doing, so that will...
That shows a stop sign there right now?
It's just a stop sign today. So this is going to be a, it's a three-way intersection, so it'll be a traffic light, signalize that intersection. And actually, I think that's, my plan shows the phase one.
Yeah, so the one that's tied to 53 is the new one.
Okay.
How will turning lanes and that kind of thing be handled on this?
Based on the traffic study, the turn lanes weren't warranted.
Okay.
Of course, that all has to be submitted and reviewed by the engineering department, so.
I know as part of this, the material's going to be kind of like stucco, cement boards, or no vinyl?
No vinyl will be allowed, it will be kind of board and batten, shake siding, fiber cement, stone, and brick.
For sale or rent? Any thoughts?
Right now, it's, it's a fit.
Okay.
What's anticipated build-out timeframe?
Well, I mean...
That's a moving target.
Well, I mean, if we get all engineering done, we get the approvals, you know, we'll start engineering, and hopefully start moving there, hopefully by the end of the year.
And finishing all units over what course of time?
Hopefully delivery, you know, third or fourth. At least the first units.
Do you know who the developers are, are you the developer?
I am.
Well, you know who he is, I don't know. What's the name of your company?
Edwards Road Investments.
It's what, I'm sorry?
Edwards Road Investments.
Edwards, okay. Thank you.
Others? We have a motion and a second. Ms. Duncan?
Yes, sir.
Do I need a call for question? Call for question?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes. Last item in new business is first reading of ordinance 53-2022. department's going to address. First item is purchase approval of extrication equipment. Deputy Chief Josh Holzheimer is going to explain to us what they are needing approval for.
Mayor, pro tem, and members of council, thank you for having me here tonight. Yes, the first item is the addition, you know, as we are adding two new engine companies this year, we are needing additional extrication equipment. And that, as you read through it, we're asking for the Spartan Fire Emergency Apparatus, whom is a sole source vendor for Homatro Rescue Tools, be awarded the funds or to purchase this equipment from $88,057.98. They are a sole source vendor. And you will recall, about two years ago, we purchased some of the same equipment to replace our existing Hearst equipment.
Counsel, you have heard the deputy chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Any questions about the development agreement?
Run the terms by me one more time.
Yes, sir. The acreage that will be donated is roughly three acres. That, I believe, the line has not been defined yet. They're still working all of that out. And then, the cost will be reduced roughly 50% from the single-family detached, will be reduced from 2913 to 1456. And the townhome fee is 1952. It will be reduced to 976.
We're doing that because...
Of the land donation.
Is the land useful?
It is. Yes, sir.
That was intentional.
Yes, sir, it was intentional. This was actually something that administration had requested of the developer.
Others?
I'll say, generally, I appreciate staff's approach to this, you know, where this type of agreement is concerned generally, but kind of knowing the conversation, you know, with this item specifically, I think this is a win-win for residents, for us, for the developer, and the community in general. So...
Agree. Do we have any idea how we're going to use the donated land?
Yes, sir, I do have some ideas.
Good.
I do.
We're not going to speak to them at this time.
Right now, I don't want to lay it out there, because I'm not 100% sure which one would be the most appropriate. So, we're currently weighing options at this time. But, you will be the first to know when staff is ready to make a recommendation.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes. Counsel, we have one item that may be considered in executive session. This is a contractual matter. Do I hear a motion for counsel to enter into executive session?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion, entering to executive session, discuss a contractual matter pertaining to project slapshot as allowed by state statute, section 30-470A2.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes. Counsel, we have one item that may be considered in executive session. This is a contractual matter. Do I hear a motion for counsel to enter into executive session?